Regular call Escambia County School Board meeting. We appreciate everybody joining us tonight, whether you are here in the audience or whether you're via the live stream. We appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. We do ask that you silence your cell phones at this time and remind you that if you wish to participate in the public forum, you must complete a speaker form, bring that forward to the front table and give it to Ms. Dooley, and then that will happen later on in the meeting. It is the practice that if you want to speak to an item that's on the agenda in the special consent agenda, then you notate that. If that's a special item, whether it's in curriculum and instruction, finance, business services, human resources, or operations, you can notate that and speak when it's time for that particular item to be voted on, and we will pull that item from the consent agenda. You must complete your form to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. This meeting was properly advertised on June 16th in the Pensacola News Journal, and so at this time, it is the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meetings with an invitation or a motivational moment followed by the pledge of allegiance. It's my month to lead us in that, so at this time, I would like to ask you to stand and, if you would, in your own way, offer a prayer as we're fixing to begin the next school year. And there are several items that I think we can all think about if we want to offer prayer for at this time, and then we will begin, I'll begin you with the pledge. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. So at this time, Mr. Superintendent, we're going to move into adopting the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from your recommended agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page three, under Finance and Business Services, Section E, Purchasing, Item 20 has been amended. That's the bid award for Beulah Elementary's new cafeteria and renovations to Building One. Item 30 has been added, Engineering Services for McDaniel Building, Air Handler Replacement. Item 31 has been added, Construction Management at Risk Services District Wide, and Item 32 has been added, Replacement Shiller for Warrington Middle.
That's all?
Yes, thank you.
A light list this month. Thank you, sir. All right. State statutes and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause and determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. I have seen these, and I do think that they fit the criteria for just cause. I would like to also add tonight that Mr. Fetzko is not with us, and I just want to make sure the board members are all aware he is on the telephone and making sure that no one has a problem with him participating and voting tonight, and so that was a recommendation. So anybody have a problem with Mr. Fetzko participating by long distance?
No.
Anybody have a problem with the additions to the new agenda?
No.
No? Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda for this meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Thank everyone. All right. At this moment, we're going to move into committee and departmental reports. We have one tonight, and that's with our world famous PTA. Please come forward and tell us all the wonderful things that's been going on this summer. I know y'all have been very, very busy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, Superintendent and staff. July has been a very eventful month for PTA. PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Last week, Escambia County PTA representatives attended the Florida PTA State Convention. It was a great opportunity for us to learn, as well as network, and share ideas with PTA attendees from across the state. It is also a time for us to use our collective voices and vote on resolutions. This year, we adopted resolutions involving learning laws, school-to-prison pipeline, and systematic racism infant-to-maternal mortality. Our district was well represented with attendees in person and hybrid from AK Suter, Beulah Elementary, Lipscomb Elementary, West Florida High School, MacArthur Elementary, Kingsville Elementary, as well as members of the ECC PTA Board. We were also honored to have Ms. Patty Hightower and State Representative and past President Michelle Sosman in attendance. Lastly, our county is preparing for our annual county leadership training. This training is on August 14th, you should have all received an invite, at Pensacola State College. This event is free and open to the public. We are highly encouraging all OSOs to attend, so all of our parents who want to learn how to be a professional volunteer are extended this opportunity. This training includes record-keeping procedures, current IRS reporting for treasurers, parliamentary procedures for secretaries, membership growth, healthy programming for students, cultural arts, as well as principals training, among others. We have free daycare, free breakfast, free lunch, and after training, there's also a free vendor event. On behalf of our Escambia County Council of PTAs and our local PTA and PTSA units, I appreciate the opportunity to share our good news. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our PTA? Don't just run. I do, I do want to also, on behalf of the district and the board, thank past local and state president, Ms. Patty Hightower, because undoubtedly that's where you were busily running off to Friday when you said, "I gotta get out of town" for attending. That's, some of us have been on the road a lot, and we definitely appreciate your input and your extra effort to be there and representing. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to say how proud I was of all of our attendees, those of us who have been around, you know, a while. It's always wonderful to go and see all the young, enthusiastic, passionate people that assemble there, and I just am very grateful to PTA in general because I think a lot of the knowledge I used at the podium here comes from my experience as a, as a PTA president. I know Samara is, is learning how to tactfully answer questions, but I know that she has had a challenge this past year with COVID, as so many of us have, and Mr. Superintendent, hopefully we'll be able to welcome our parents back into our schools. I know it's not, we don't know yet, but, but I know that our parents are eager to get back to doing what they can for each school that they represent, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we're going to move on into public forum. Do I have any requests? No? Okay. As I always try to be very open about this, going, going, going. Okay. No, so anytime you wish to come back again and speak on public forum, we will greatly welcome your participation. So, Mr. Superintendent, we're gonna jump right into administrative appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this evening, what we could do is approve the appointments and then have them come up one by one, if, unless you prefer another method.
Sir, any way you want to do it? If we can do it that way? If you'd like us to do them all at once?
Yes, if, so if we could go ahead and entertain the motion?
You want to read the list, just to make sure it's official in the minutes?
So the list of administrative appointments are Daniel Bussie, teacher from Northview High, becoming a specialist workforce education. Connie Farish, moving from Pleasant Grove Elementary as a principal to the position of Director of Elementary School Education under Curriculum and Instruction. Stephanie Gilmore, currently a curriculum coordinator at Longleaf Elementary, becoming an elementary school assistant principal at West Pensacola High School, excuse me, West Pensacola Elementary School. Alicia Mathis, curriculum coordinator at Ensley Elementary, moving to elementary school assistant principal, Suter Elementary. Nicole Owens-Bragg, from West Pensacola Elementary as an assistant principal to the principal position at Pleasant Grove Elementary, and Denny Wilson, from Director of Continuous Improvement and School Choice, to Warrington Middle School as a middle school principal.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to accept these recommendations from the superintendent?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the appointees by the superintendent.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote. Mr. Fetzko? Thank you very much, sir.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Now, you want to bring each of them up one at a time?
We will. I understand that Mr. Bussie is not able to attend tonight, so we will go right to Connie Farish, becoming Director of Elementary. (applause)
So Dr. Smith and school board members, I would just like to thank you very much for the opportunity to serve as elementary director alongside Patty Thomas. That's been a goal of mine for many, many years, and it will indeed be my pleasure to work with her, as well as the elementary principals. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am.[1574.51][1574.51](applause)
Stephanie Gilmore, curriculum coordinator, becoming an assistant principal at West Pensacola
I wanted to take a moment to thank the board, Dr. Smith, Ms. Payne, for this opportunity to serve in Escambia County. I would also like to recognize my previous administrators who invested time to help me become a better leader. My family deserves a special thanks for their continuous support and encouragement to continue pursuing my goal of becoming an instructional leader in Escambia County. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank my grandfather. My grandfather served in Escambia County School District for 37 years. He retired as a high school principal. He instilled the value of education from a very early age. He taught me to lead with integrity, to have compassion for others, and never stop learning. I am dedicated to the mission of West Pensacola Elementary, which is to increase life chances for all students. I look forward to working with all stakeholders to make this a wonderful school year. Thank you.
And Ms. Gilmore? Ms. Gilmore? Not fair, because they're gonna ask, what was your grandfather's name?
Etzel Smith. He retired from Century.
Century High School Principal.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Man, a person to be very proud of. Thank you. Now you can applaud.[1706.30][1706.30](applause)
All right. Next, we have Alicia Mathis, coming from Ensley Elementary, will be the assistant principal at Suter Elementary School.[1721.01][1721.01](applause)
I would like to thank everyone for this opportunity to serve our district and its family and children. I have not had anything planned to say this evening, but I do want you to know that I plan to do my absolute best in everything I do to help with the education of the youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1783.01][1783.01](applause)
We have a new principal at Pleasant Grove Elementary, Nicole Owens-Bragg, coming from West Pensacola Elementary into the new principal position.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, school board members, and executive staff for this opportunity. I would also like to thank the principals that I have worked with, and they have afforded me the opportunities to grow as an instructional leader. Specifically, thank you to Cassandra for her undying supporting and encouragement. Thank you, Christine, for allowing me the space to try, fail, grow, and then try again. Thank you, Connie, for leaving a great foundation in which I can reach new heights from. Thank you to my children, Nadia, Jada, Nicholas, but most of all, thank you to Jesse, my husband, for giving me advice and encouragement even when I did not want to hear it. And thank you to God for being in a position where we get to spread the good message of hope and perseverance on a daily basis. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that Ms. Owens-Bragg also was our Assistant Principal of the Year earlier this year. She is selected in that, so I just thought it was worth noting that. Next, yes.
Yes.
Next, we have Denny Wilson, moving from Director of Continuous Improvement to the middle school
Dr. Smith and the board, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank the Continuous Improvement family. Mr. McFarland is in the audience, and Joelle Holland with the Military Grants, and Ramona Wright, who just does a wonderful job with ESOL. And especially want to thank my secretary back there, BJ, and Jen Montoya, who, over the last four years, has just brought a new sense of customer service to our department. It's been a pleasure to serve as the Director of Continuous Improvement for the past seven years and work with some of our most fragile schools. Also, want to take this opportunity, I've been up here a couple of times with a couple of different positions, and have thanked my mentors that have allowed me to be where I am today. And when I took this job, I had the opportunity to become friends with, but I appreciate so much his support and the guidance that he's given me over the years, and how well he leads the CNI department. Mr. Marciano, I appreciate you. I had to get approval from several people before I was able to take this opportunity. First, Dr. Smith had to afford me the opportunity to put my name forward to the state school board. I was finally approved last week. But before I even got approval from Dr. Smith, there was somebody that is more important than anybody else in this room, and that's Gina Wilson, because she remembers my life as a principal before. She has seen me working the hours that I was already working, filling in when there wasn't a principal there. And so, she has been my cheerleader since we met over 28 years ago, and she is in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, a former first-grade teacher setting up our daughter's first-grade classroom, and that's where she is tonight, but they're both watching. But I want to say a special word of thanks for her support. And I just want to say that Warrington Middle School will be the lighthouse of that community, and we will serve every student every day, whatever it takes. So, thank you again for this opportunity.
I don't think you could go without saying that we have a great big thank you to you for stepping forward. Anybody that thinks the superintendent may or not have had some sleepless nights in this search is wrong, because we all did, and I know he did. And we all may have thought it, but until your wife and you sat down and prayed about it and accepted it and took the challenge on, it wasn't a complete mission and it was a complete statement, but we appreciate it. This board appreciates it very much. I can't think of anybody I would rather have there than Denny Wilson, because we've seen your effects on a school like this before, and we greatly appreciate it. And I don't think anybody else wants to say anything, but you've got the 100% support of this school board in any way and every way that we can. So, we certainly appreciate it. Anybody else?
No, Mr. Fetzko.
Mr. Fetzko, did you have something you want to say, or were you just, he wasn't snoring, was he? No. Mr. Fetzko?
Yeah, what I would like to say is that I had talked with Mr. Wilson at several of the community conversations, and at one point, he said he didn't understand why he was first selected as a principal. But Mr. Wilson had shown way before that that he had the integrity, that he has the heart to care about children and to care about his staff, and to make sure that people get everything they need to be successful. Denny, it was not a fluke that you were selected to be a principal the first time you went around. You proved everyone who was in your corner that they were right, and you continue to prove to our community that you have what it takes for us to believe in you, to follow you, and to know that we did not waste our time when we have you in a leadership position. So, I thank you, sir, and I thank your wife also.
Thank you, Mr. Fetzko.
Anything else? Denny?
Can I just say one more thing?
You can, certainly.
When I was leaving, rushing to get over here, I left my new team in the back. They were working around the table, and then when I got here, they were sitting on the back row. And when I got here, I said, "I don't know what y'all are doing here, because y'all still need to be at work. We got a lot to do." But I do want to thank my friends from LSI, Dr. Travis Griffin and Adrian Green, what a wonderful team, and we've already bonded, and so humble and appreciative to be able to work with those two.
Is that James in the back?
That's James.
He's back there.
Let your team stand up. I think everybody needs to start identifying the leadership team, the assistant principals at the LSI. Thank you very much, and I will tell you, as I've told the last group, we're gonna move right on in the meeting, but if you do or do not have reservations for supper, feel free to exit unless you're just dying to hear the rest of the great things we're gonna do tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
They may want to stay, because he makes them go back to work.
Well, that's true. Thank you very much. All right, the next thing for the board is adoption of the minutes, where I think we had three sets of minutes that are to be adopted tonight. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move items A, B, and C of the minutes.
Thank you very much, sir. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, so the next thing is in our proposed rules adoption. This is a notice of intent to adopt the amendments to the School District of Escambia County, Florida Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Do I have a motion to adopt this handbook?
I move to adopt the amendments to the Rights and Responsibility Handbook.
Thank you. Is that a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Don't we have to have a public hearing?
Yes, we do. Is there anybody who wants to speak to this in public hearing? Thank you. All right, now, any discussion on the board? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And the next one, a resolution to name the tennis complex at Oak Crest Elementary, the Tennis for Everyone Complex. Mr., okay, let's have the motion first.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, and now we have a public hearing. And, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to read the proclamation and anything else you'd like to say?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of people who will be referenced in this resolution, and I would ask, if you hear your name, please stand so that we can acknowledge you this evening. Whereas the School Advisory Council at Oak Crest Elementary and the Oak Crest-Ibbonwood Tennis Complex Committee respectfully request to name the new tennis facility located on the Oak Crest Elementary School campus, and whereas this complex will consist of four dedicated eight-year-old and younger courts and one regulation court with blended lines for nine-year-old to adult play, and whereas the various court sizes will allow more people at all levels to enjoy, to learn, enjoy tennis, and continue to play the game for life, and whereas this project was a collaborative fundraising effort among many community partners, and whereas this complex will allow the Oak Crest-Ibbonwood Tennis Complex Committee and its community partners to bring the game of tennis to an underserved community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the school board of Escambia County, Florida, recognize the Oak Crest-Ibbonwood Tennis Complex Committee for their dedicated service, their fundraising contributions to the School District of Escambia and to the community, and do hereby grant permission to name the tennis complex located on the campus of Oak Crest Elementary, the Tennis for Everyone Complex. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption by the school board of Escambia County, Florida. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be included in the minutes of the regular meeting of said school board, and that a copy be tendered to Linda Bonifay, principal, on behalf of Escambia County, Commissioner Lumen May, Leroy Williams, Rita Dotson, Cassandra Manus, Joe Miller, Victoria N. Will Mullet, Mike Vandenberg, the family of the late Russ Crosby, Rick Rawls, the United States Tennis Association National Foundation, the United States Tennis Association Florida Foundation, and Pensacola Sports Association, adopted this 20th day of July 2021.
All right, we did not have any public discussion, any discussion by the board? If not, please vote. Okay, and don't sit down. Come on up front. Come on, come up front, those that were standing. Come on. I guess Commissioner May had to go put his tennis outfit on before he...
You for helping.
That's good with her.
It's good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, get in front and get your picture made. Just want to say thank you to this group and to everybody in this community that's making this available to the students. You never know what, excuse me, budding star may be out there ready to go. And so, that's a great, great thing to have in that community. All right. Now, if I can get my voice back, we do not have anything for advertising purposes, so we'll move into the consent agenda. If there are any items that the board members would like to pull from the consent agenda, please let me know as we go through the list. Okay. Anything in finance and business services? Anything under human resources? And anything under operations? Okay, thank you very much. Please vote on the consent. We didn't get a motion a while ago? You got to remind me of this. You're trying to get her attention? Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? No. Thank you, and please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Items from the super, no, items from the board. All right, there was a discussion on the selection of a board member to serve on the Early Learning Coalition. Has anyone decided that they would like to assume this position? Or do we forward that to the next meeting?
As I said before, I have served on it in the past, but I'm just afraid with the children's trust, it could create a conflict, so I would prefer not to do that.
Mr. Chair, I didn't get Elizabeth on the requirements of it, but I'll do it knowing that I got the absentee stuff that I'm doing too, where I'll be leaving town. So, I don't know if that interferes with it at all.
I think there are two meetings a month?
One.
One? One meeting every two. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fetzko.
After our workshop, I had considered, if the board would so choose, I also would accept that and would work on the Early Learning Coalition for the next year or so, see how things go, but if there's no one else who wants to, who has a passion to do it, I do have some background with early learning, and I would be willing to do that.
Okay, so do I have a motion for Mr. Fetzko?
Mr. Adams, are you okay with us nominating Mr. Fetzko to the Early Learning Coalition on our behalf? So, that's my motion.
That's your motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Thank you very much. Please vote.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, you're welcome.
Motion carries 4-0.
He voted too.
Thank you very much.
Did he vote too?
He has to vote.
Mr. Fetzko?
Do I have to vote?
Yes. Yes, you do.
Yes.
Okay.
5-0. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay.
It'd be interesting, he voted no, and it was...
Doesn't matter, he's going to, he got the job anyway.
Don't win. He's just have to do it.
All right, now moving to Mr. Superintendent. Student discipline. None for disciplinary assignments, none for expulsion, and none for employee discipline?
Wow.
Mr. Superintendent, would you mark this date down on your calendar? Outstanding. Okay, next, we have recommendation from the Escambia County Public School Foundation for new members of the Board of Directors. Do I have a motion to accept this recommendation from the Superintendent for the Board of Directors?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the approval of the nominees.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, please vote. Mr. Fetzko? He voted yes. Thank you.
Mr. Slaton, your light did not show up.
Oh, well, sorry about that.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, nothing under internal auditing, and now we have a recommendation from our General Counsel on the appointment of a hearing officer. I believe the bio for that person was forwarded to everybody, so do I have a motion to accept this recommendation for a new hearing officer?
I move the appointment of the so-named hearing officer.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any? Please vote.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
That's all the items on the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, did you have a little item you wanted to discuss?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to share that we are planning to have volunteers back in full, starting this school year, so Wanda Kotick, in her office, they're on the timeline to go, just like they've done in previous years, with the whole process and the applications and so forth. So we are all set and planned for volunteers to return to our school campuses, as has been the custom in the past.
Right. Good. Thank you very-
Full, normal operations.
Yeah.
Yes.
Don't get too far. And are you going to, I know that today we were made aware that the calls are going out from the schools to the, from the principals. I just want to make sure that parents listen to those messages.
Yes.
Because they're, they're coming to tell you about start times and bus routing and where to go to find out all that information. So I know school is getting closer than we think, so just be sure and check your district, your school's website for all the latest and up-to-date information. Don't just let it go to voicemail and never check it.
And if all possible, attend the orientations-
Yes.
-that are being advertised. I've gotten, I've seen several invitations in my Facebook packs and different things of orientation dates for elementary, middle, and high. So please, please, try to attend those. It's a great way to meet the people on the campus, great way to meet teachers, great way to deliver supplies, and as Ms. Hightower said, and get the correct information for starting times, because they have been changed, especially in our elementary area. Not as much in the middle and high school yet, but... Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a list of all the open houses that are coming up?
You mean the orientations?
Yeah, orientations.
Mr. Marciano, do we have that?
The orientations, the date for those orientations are on the district calendar. I just closed my computer down, or else I would tell you what that is. But they are listed on the district calendar. High schools will send that information out separately, because they do things a little bit differently, but middle and elementary are on the district calendar.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I know that we've already talked about Warrington Middle, and I know many of you probably attended more than one, but it was my opportunity last night to attend, I don't know whether it's the last of the meetings with Warrington Middle and their staff, and I just wanted to say, what an amazing group of people who have come together to lead that school. When you hear their message about what brought them, what led them to that, that decision, and I just think that that says a lot of positivity in the air for what's going to be going forward with that school. And I know that they have one more big event planned to welcome the kids and the parents back to their, their school at the end of this month. So if you're interested in helping them, becoming a mentor, or volunteering in the school, see Mr. Wilson.
Exactly. Any rumors on grades, school grades?
The information that I have heard is that they are coming soon, but without further definition than that, I, I do expect them in the next, next couple of weeks. Of course, the calendar this year for returning, the test score information was pushed back, because there were so many districts with calendars that were, were pushed back from earlier in the year. So we knew the scores would be coming back later than normal, and that's probably going to be with, if I had to guess, I would say in the next couple of weeks.
As we heard at the State School Board meeting, they were promising them almost this week.
Yeah. I would be hesitant to pinpoint a date on, on that.
Yes. Well, everybody stay tuned.
Yes.
That's good. All right. Dr. Adler, anything? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I apologize for being late. I was just putzing around. What happens when I don't want to?
You have been removed from the conference.